What we're.
Sorry.
So you'll see what we've expanded as of June thirtieth. That's, that should be roughly what we appropriated for twenty twenty five. And our budget for twenty twenty six could be roughly around fifty percent. So if you look at the notes, if you see anything appropriated for twenty twenty six and it looks higher or lower, you should see something in the notes off to the side. So this one, first one. Starting out Article three.
Yeah.
So most of these, the ones that didn't have any changes or anything aren't going to be broken down in the budget pack. But you will see them in the town report. So Article three, administration to see if the town will vote to raise appropriated. One hundred ninety nine thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for administration to a fifty, two hundred, twenty five hundred dollars from office fees and. One hundred and ninety seven dollar, or one hundred ninety seven thousand two hundred fifty dollars from taxation. So one thing we did add was the town clerk. So you will see. Expanded as of June thirtieth. And then the budget clerk added for the budget for twenty twenty six. Like if everything's gonna, it should be pretty close to half of what the full budget was for last year. Any questions on administration? Let me know if I'm going too fast, please. Some of them are kind of small, so. Yeah, I'm, I'm. I'm having hard times.
It'll be a different format next year.
We tried the projector last year and we had issues with that too. So we thought the Packer was a little better idea. What's that? Yes.
That's just the timing of when we pay for things because we do the audit. We'll have an audit after January and. The town report will be done before July. So that's just the time.
I should have said that earlier. So a lot of these things are paid. January through June and then summer, July through December. So. So it won't hit on this budget, but it will for our next meeting. Thank you. Any other questions? Article three? Article five assessor. Yeah, sorry, Alex. Yes, so that's, that's what we're going to be talking about at the town meeting on Saturday.
Now, only two things. Yeah, specifically that one says June thirty.
Yeah, that's the half. Yes.
A couple of the senators happened now, but that will not come back later. I think one of those is the website function. I think is that right? Is it my right? There are a few things I would just so people know there are some things that we have to pay for now. Um, you know, to follow.
Right, yes. Do you have that carryover? All good. Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty eight thousand. There was a. Error there, two hundred twenty five dollars from taxation and, or for assessors salaries and expenses. I don't think there was any big changes. Any questions on that? Article seven, planning and code enforcement, to see if the town will vote to raise the inappropriate. Thirty thousand two hundred and ten for the planning board, including code enforcement, officers, salaries and expenses, one thousand three hundred fifty from permit fees and twenty eight thousand eight hundred sixty. From taxation.
And I just noticed the total for the twenty five appropriations didn't capture that forty thousand. So it's actually. Forty eight, seven thirty was the total that we budgeted for two thousand twenty five. The two thousand, what we appropriated for two thousand twenty five, the total says eight thousand seven hundred thirty. It's actually forty eight, seven thirty. Because that forty thousand dollars for the planner and the top that didn't, that was added in and it didn't get added into the formula at the bottom.
The whole bunch of that again?
Forty eight, just that forty thousand.
No, Faye wrapped up her code on a jog from vinyl haven, but she's so confused with us here and then I was just.
Kim?
What is the planner?
That's the new position. So we're, yes. So that was the one we voted on last town meeting. That's Matt. What's his last name?
Nixon. It's a contracted position.
So to help us with the thoroughfare project and. Okay, good. Article seven. Plumbing inspector, no articles?
Yeah, this could not. That pays for itself. Right, yeah. Yeah, that's one of those that all, everything that comes in by law goes to that budget. So we haven't had to raise money for that for a while.
Article eight, fitness center. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate sixteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars for the fitness center from membership fees. Uh, one thing, so we, we went from the furnace to heat pumps. So you'll see. The fuel zero, but the electric's up. So. All right, we'll see. Hopefully it works out.
And the reason you hear it tonight is because we're trying to use up all the fuel before we turn those on.
Yes.
Any questions on our plate? Bridget?
Uh, furnace adds a backup because I heard that after a low temperature that the. Heat pumps don't work as good as. Yeah.
Any other questions? Article ten, town properties, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate sixty four thousand twenty dollars for maintenance and improvements. On town properties, forty eight hundred from rental income, four thousand seven hundred and thirty from North Haven Conservation Partners, two thousand seven hundred and fifty from fitness center dues. And fifty one thousand seven hundred and forty from taxation. Yes, I do. I would love to. Uh, one thing we did add, most of them are at fifty percent. We did put in the basketball court. I know that's been an issue. We're still trying to. To raise some, some money and see if we can get some donations, but uh, we, we budgeted for five thousand dollars for fencing nets and some other maintenance. He said the townhouse, sorry, yeah, fire station, the old fire station.
It was the conservation partners.
Well, they do a, like a payment in lieu of taxes and normally all of that goes towards the Mullins head budget, but Mullins head spends. Most of their budget from July to August. So they didn't need that going towards their budget because there's not much in there.
Anything else on town properties? Article eleven, insurance, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate forty four thousand three hundred fifty eight dollars from taxation to pay premiums on insurance coverage.
Is it being appropriated to the risk pool?
I'm not sure what you mean.
The risk pool, I appropriated in twenty five was thirty two thousand. And that gone down to nineteen thousand five hundred.
Well, because we're only paying for half the year. It's in four payments.
Yep.
And the worker, the workers comp, it looks like we're paying. A lot more for that, but that is paid. They bill us in four installment and the first installment are the bigger ones. So mo- most of that is paid the first six months of the year. That's why that number is so close to the full year this year.
Article twelve, payroll expenses, to see if the town. Will vote to raise and appropriate one hundred eighty four thousand one hundred fifty six dollars from taxation for payroll expenses, social security, Medicare. Retirement contributions, main PFML and health insurance premiums.
Now, you must be getting a lot of pieces in all that.
And, well, the, the first four are just a percentage of gross pay. So those. It's just what the, all the salaries and the rest of the budget, that's just a percentage. The health insurance. We had to guess on how much it's going to go up because we don't find out until December. For late November, what that's going to be. And it went up some because we have the clerk now who is taking insurance. And another employee that through open enrollment decided to take the insurance to us.
And we estimate, I think it was five percent. We estimated about a five percent increase for insurance.
Yeah.
Because of going through MMA, it's such a big pool that our increases are generally a lot less than individual problems. It still is a guess. I use the last five years, I think, and just kind of average.
Three legal, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate eight thousand dollars in taxation for legal expenses of the town.
That too, I just, instead of just taking half of what we've. You know, just going, instead of just going by what we spent the first half of this year, I looked at the past few years. And didn't average because some years, you know, it just takes a few contracts or something to really change the amount that we pay.
Article eighteen, fire department, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate thirty four thousand two hundred from taxation. For the salaries and expenses of the fire department. One thing that thirty seven Dodge that we had in Alice's head. So we're now putting that, Andrew Bonnerigo agreed that we can put at the old fire station. So. We have it in there in a heated bay. So. Think we're paying, yes, five hundred. It went from twenty five hundred to five hundred a year.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
So save a couple thousand. We don't have to worry about getting it back and forth on the ferry boat. So.
Also, the maintenance repair budget looks like a lot less, but that's again, just timing. Their pump tests and hose tests are usually in August. August to September. So that will be in the next budget.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifty five thousand four hundred dollars from taxation for police protection. I said, he's actually my neighbor. I see him, I see him leave the house.
Quite often, sometimes he's not there. I will say that. But it's already done. Sometimes he's not there.
So a lot of that is, is through the county. We don't have a lot of say in some of that. So you see in the county contract that, you know, it was appropriated eighty five thousand and twenty five and we're looking at fifty thousand just in case. This whole time, yes.
But we pay fifty percent. The county pays. Pays him and then they bill us for fifty percent.
Article sixteen, animal control, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate eight hundred forty dollars in taxation for animal control.
Who is the animal controller?
So Stephanie James.
Was we had in the past?
Uh, yeah, we have a contract with Pope Memorial and they repay them for it at least. Yeah, yeah. And I think it's a, like a three year contract because last time, so that did change. I just rounded it up, four dollars.
Article seventeen, other public safety, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate fifteen hundred dollars from taxation. For other public safety, including public fire protection and streetlights. The one thing you'll see on the streetlights, we had those LEDs that we got installed from a grant. So. Uh, we appropriated five thousand for twenty twenty five and. It's gone down quite a bit. So. Just fifteen hundred for half a year. I think they look a lot better too.
That's the payment that, that the town makes in the fire department, the water department every year for, for keeping the fire hydrants available. For use. And that's the PUC formula that comes up with that amount. But that is paid, I paid that later in the year. So that's not in this. Because most of that is that public fire protection and that payment's not made in the first half of the year. That's made later. Yeah.
Article eighteen, roads and bridges, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate forty five thousand dollars for roads and bridges, including road maintenance. Patching and tarring, mowing and cutting bushes.
And that forty five thousand comes from excise tax.
Article nineteen, snow removal, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate thirty seven thousand five hundred for snow removal, including. Sanding and putting up and taking down snow fences, thirty three thousand five hundred from excise tax and four thousand dollars from taxation.
Yeah, that's, that's always a guess, but this, the. From January to, you know, through the end of the snow season is generally a little more spent than, than at the end of the season. Um, last year I went back five years and we had been over appropriated for a while. So we did take it down.
Article twenty, floats and docks, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate four thousand ninety dollars for repairs and maintenance of the town floats and docks. Five hundred dollars to come from Vinyl Haven and three thousand five hundred and ninety from taxation.
We have a lease with the landowners at the end of the park there. So that's the chances that are going on a portion of the property. San Diego's describing the. And okay, that's why I wanted to get it right.
Is the, here the handle? Article twenty one, solid waste, to see if the town will vote to raise and raise and appropriate. Uh, one hundred and thirty seven thousand three hundred fifty for operation of the solid waste recycle center. Forty nine thousand from the transfer station fees and eighty eight thousand three hundred fifty from taxation.
Is there a reason you can't get it all cranked for station fees by increasing speeds?
So we've, we, we've actually made a lot of improvement on that. We're just from the bad costs to, because the town was. Really taking all this, subsidizing all the expenses out there. And so that's why we redid. Yes, yep. And I, it was everything. I mean, for furniture to, you know, couches, love seats, beds, like we, we went through and. And raised a lot of that, but obviously it's still. Still a lot more from taxation than it probably should be.
With the, with the recent change of employment, it's definitely on the select for its radar and there's been a lot of discussion about. The transfer station, its operation, its management and all things of that nature. We haven't got to the scheduled discussion yet, but it's definitely on the dot.
And you guys consider doing it all through fees instead of.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that. So the, the fee schedule in, just in general is, will be coming up for discussion.
Would you guys consider doing it all through beans?
I think over time, but I mean, even if we get closer to fifty fifty. You know, if I take a refrigerator, I expect to pay to dispose of the, yeah, the refrigerator. I, I shouldn't. Ask the taxpayers to subsidize that cost.
I know in the past, some of the talk has been finding the balance between. Paying as much out of fees as possible and not making it so expensive that people are throwing their trash in the woods. Yeah, yes.
We're actually pretty close to, a lot of things were very similar. So. But we had a lot of good ideas. So we're gonna, we're gonna talk about it soon.
I have pictures for you.
In the comments on two thousand. Returnables, but only five dollars for, from them.
Five thousand. Yeah, that was supposed to be five K.
Oh, okay.
She's used to proofreading.
Now we're discussing that. I mean, yes.
Something, it says there's a two thousand dollar profit from the returnals, but there actually isn't. The employee time to separate it was not included. So we are in the red. So the outcome is still the same. Everything's still getting recycled. It's just not getting recycled through the returnables themselves because it is putting us in the red. Things that we've thought about that Vinyl, Vinyl Haven does across from Carver's, they have a section where people can go and do their returnables. They separate it themselves. And then a nonprofit actually goes and picks up the returnables and takes them themselves to redemption center for. Kind of, yeah.
At the recycling center.
Well, I actually sent an email to the school this morning and it's to see if they wanted to do one for maybe the senior class, but they weren't interested. So that was just this morning. So.
Looking at having two employees, kind of like Vinyl Haven does, instead of a third employee to separate cans and bottles. And then. Also, we got to find a place to put them and then have somebody take them to mainland and just kind of trying to streamline the way the transfer station works.
But they are all still getting recycled. Yes.
And of course, they're still paying, the fee you get for them is still the same as it was when I was ten, when they started doing that. So that doesn't. Yeah.
Article twenty two, North Haven Medical Clinic. Uh, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate two hundred and seventy seven thousand five hundred eighty for med- medical coverage, seventy five thousand from the clinic fees. And two hundred and two thousand five hundred from taxation.
That's three, that's just the, those. Three columns where it calculates and puts it into that one we already did with the payroll.
Okay.
It's just.
Yes, so we pay one thousand dollars a month to rent room from the Southern Harbor House. It is. So we're looking at better ways to. To use that space moving forward.
The mental health.
Right, right.
But if we are going to continue to rent it, we want to make sure it's being used. Article twenty three, TMS, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate. Fifty seven thousand three hundred dollars for emergency medical services, three hundred dollars from. Medevac fees. And fifty four thousand three hundred dollars from taxation. A total for the UNF.
There are. We have the office, there's a, a director and a crew chief and then lieutenant. And then the others are the stipends for all the on-call coverages.
I don't know the total off the top of my head. I don't know the total off the top of my head. Article twenty four Veterans Graves. Let's see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate five hundred dollars from taxation to care of for the care of veterans memorial and graves in accordance with MRS A Title Thirty Tech A Section Fifty Seven Twenty Three.
And the mowing bill is paid in the fall, so that's why that's.
Twenty five other health and welfare to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one thousand dollars from pet station for other health and welfare, including cemetery, mowing and general assistance.
And the cemetery mowing is um, some of the veterans graves are just cracked separately than the other ones. So it comes out of two budgets budgets. And again, this isn't paid until the fall. So. Yeah, yeah, that's why it comes out of two different budgets.
So that's actually incorrect. So we were under, when I came into the position, um, things weren't reported correctly, so we were under like a compliance review. Um, but in general, nobody asks for general assistance.
I think there may be two years since I've been here that we've had people use it. And general assistance is one area where legally, um, if we do go over, we we can't. Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, we try not to.
Yeah, we would. It was more that we were on hold because we um, were in that compliance. Yeah, so. There is. It is a very strict guidelines that the state puts in place for that. So if you know somebody that is an assistance, you have to go through all your local chapters, like local churches, food bank, things like that first. And then they could come and ask for the general assistance.
Just, um, you know, for help with, um, what is it, sometimes rent, electric and groceries or just people need. Yeah, yeah. And there there's an application process and um, yeah. Yes.
Competent.
Your question, sorry. Uh, that's something we actually talked about today. Think the Pulpit Harbor Foundation is trying to get on the select board, the next select board meeting, and then we can discuss that moving forward. So, well, I don't know how much I can talk about it, but so we were trying to make it where in that meeting the other day where we're gonna do a donation to keep it moving forward from the town because it's a nonprofit.
So we were advised by legal to stop the process as we are doing it now. The town wants to see the program continue, but the way the person is getting paid needed to be rearranged or adjusted. So right now we're looking at restructuring how this program continues. But we did have a meeting with Pulpit Harbor Foundation and they did inform us they stopped the program. So we will need to meet with the outreach worker and Pulpit Harbor Foundation to figure out a path forward.
Yeah, but it's my understanding that the outreach program was always a town position that the town sponsored it from the very beginning.
So we meet with the.
So it technically is a town position. And I know a couple of months ago, well, maybe within the past last month, I was trying to do some research with old articles. And I went to the town website and in the bar, the first thing I noticed was outreach worker. And that's not there anymore because I just went to try to find the minutes from the last meeting you guys had and they're still not posted.
Well, the minutes don't get posted until they're approved the following meeting. So they'll approve the last meeting's minutes tonight and then they get posted the next day, but they can't be posted until they're approved.
So if this is a town position, I don't see what the problems that started out before.
That's part of the question is the way it's been structured. It's not clear, um, leap from a legal standpoint. It's not clear who is actually runs the position because it's not, it it's not run, it's not structured the way it needs to be.
So we're working on that. We're trying to.
A letter from the head selectman back in nineteen eighty five.
Right.
And he came to the Pulpit Harbor Foundation asking for financial support to carry out this very important position in the town.
And those articles were shared with the attorney. So we are, we are currently working on how a pathboard. A pathboard. We are working on that.
I mean, the only thing. So the town, the town wasn't hiring, firing, managing, wasn't doing anything but paying. So we're we're working with it. But we're trying to figure out the best way to move forward.
They actually sat in the meeting and told us they stopped the program. But I'm that's all I'm just going on what they said in the meeting. But we would like to work with Pulpit Harbor Foundation and the outreach worker because the position is important. But we have to go the right path. So.
So we're looking at doing a donation to keep it moving forward.
We're going to do pay the outreach worker? No.
No. So we're looking at doing a doing a donation like every other nonprofit. So they they ask for a donation and then we pay a donation, just like the library or.
We don't need a donation. We're donating to the town eighty percent of the person.
So the town would take that outreach person off the payroll, but make the donation in the same amount. Can I get you in a second, Becky? Did you still have a question, Kim, before I forget?
I just, when you say it's a legal issue, I think it's on.
Well, that's.
I mean, I think maybe it would be good to explain that because it is, yes, I just can't explain to me that because nobody's kind of managing it. It's not a vehicle that the town owns. If there were any accidents, the town would be held accountable with no viability insurance or anything and no management. So it just seems like structurally it can be improved and we can keep the program. My opinion is an incredibly valuable thing that happens to the town. Um, but you know, if you know, we if we are, you know, ending up in a very serious problem, having somebody driving their own car and getting one accident, something happens to somebody in the car and then there's a liability, you know.
Or even an accident in somebody else's car. Right, but that's the essence, right, but.
We're talking about it. I mean, the the board and I all agree that this is something that we don't want to see go away and it is it is very important to keep it.
It's it's found the select board's pocket for the past four weeks. I mean, it's it's a it's a project which unfortunately to be in the position, having to look at it by the hearing and the budget for the six-month period where we don't have solid answers. We're being advised not to give certain information because we're still in the process of trying to figure out what is our legal responsibility, what is, you know. So there's only so much. So it seems like we're trying to skirt maybe. Our intent is not to skirt any of these questions because the 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 board feels that it's an important position to continue funding, but the current structure to Becky's point is exactly the issue is that there's a lack of oversight. There's a liability issue that needs to be resolved before the position can be continued moving forward. We want the position to continue moving forward as a matter of finding the proper legal avenue to make that happen.
Do you know how long it might take before we can get this outreach worker working with the people again so that people, right now, there's people falling out of them. Do you know, have a timeline?
Well, I mean, we're in contact with the lawyer and we're trying to figure out the best way to move forward and and the quickest way possible. So hopefully not long.
But I have to say, without funding, the program cannot run. And right now, it looks to me like no funding and then not going to be funding.
Wasn't the funding through?
Pulpit Harbor Foundation covered eighty percent of of the positions.
And anything over.
Right, and anything over. So like the 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 funds have already been expanded for the past six years, I believe. I mean, there's no, there's no, there's no way to remove the position. It's a matter of finding the the correct avenue for the position. And if there is a process that requires the town, after that process has gone through and we establish how to properly maintain the position moving forward and we have to even come to some sort of special town meeting to shift funds to temporarily allocate for the six-month period that we're discussing tonight. Um, then we may have to do that, but we still have another six months left coming up this coming year where that position and very well may fall into that. So it's one thing, something works out on the liability.
Well, we hope our people in the town will get the late six months.
That's not what I'm saying.
All right, well, yeah, yeah. At our, at the meeting that we are just in, our sort of, you know, our plan going forward, the next step is to meet with the outreach worker just to gather information about the position in general. Because the town has just been doing payroll and hasn't had oversight of the position, the position itself, we just want to gather some information about and then to, you know, meet with Pulpit Harbor Foundation. So everybody involved can come up with a solution going forward. Hopefully, you know, I mean, it's more meetings, so it is hard to give a definitive the timeline, but meeting with the outreach worker and collaborating with Pulpit Harbor Foundation and the town are the next step in order to make something happen and go forward.
Any other questions?
And well, when I was reading the articles, there wasn't an article for the outreach worker like there has been in the past. Do you think we could put an article in so that it's sort of open and just put like maybe to be determined or something like, just so there is a slot that people can vote on, that that people still want an outreach person?
Um, you can't, you can't have an an article without a dollar amount associated with it, but also the the at this point, the warrant is posted. Um, it has to be posted seven days ahead of the town meeting, which is already gone past. So it would be a special town meeting if if needed, but um, I think the thought was just it was best to have a special town meeting with definitive answers than to try to guess what it might possibly be and get wrong.
So does anyone know, like before the town came and asked us for help, what the procedure was, who paid the, do you have any records?
It's been like this since I've been here. I talked to both Janice and Mary and um, they they remember it being the way it is now, but I I mean, as far as way back there, um, I would think the foundation would have just as many records as we.
Nineteen eighty five, when the head selectman came to us to ask us for financial help.
Yeah, so before that.
Ever since nineteen eighty five, there hasn't been a year we haven't helped.
Yeah, the first warrant article was actually in nineteen eighty six. But I looked at a couple of years prior to that and I did not see any warrant warrant articles to appropriate money for that position. So that it looks like that was the first article to appropriate money for that position was in nineteen eighty six. I didn't go through all the years prior to that because that would have been a lot, but I'm just saying, if I look through some of.
Seventy two, and I do know there was an out Shirley Brown was there. Yeah, Shirley Brown was, I know I'm hearing seventy two and Shirley was the outreach worker bet. And I'm assuming that she was getting paid by somebody, you know.
She, the position changed at some point because she started, she was involved. She handled the surplus.
Yeah, yeah, that was going through the state.
Yes.
And then the state got rid of Shirley's position and the town took over.
Definitely one one thing that we you know, as a board have talked about is the importance of the position. And I think that that is something that the town could can agree on is that um, it is an asset to the town. And so getting rid of that position is not the intention at all. It is mostly making sure that um, the structure of the position is legal, appropriate, you know, it that the structure of it we are doing correctly. Um, but I think keeping the you know, at at the center of our discussion that we do want the position to continue is going to be the best things, you know, for for people to agree that we do want it to happen. And what is the, what are the ways to make sure that we can do that? With assuming at least amount of liability and having a structure that is appropriate.
Well, I would guess that there need to be parameters set up because it's by experience. It's like a year round, that it sort of works the way the person who holds the position wants it to work without any standards set up that are consistent. And I think what the plan is by the select board is a very good one, and it's not only good for the program, but it's good for the town. And it helps an outreach worker understand what the job is, how it needs to be performed and have just a little more town control over it. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you. We're working on it.
And thank you to the Pulpit Harbor Foundation for funding the position because it is, I mean, it is an amazing asset and collaboration, so.
Article twenty six Mullins Head Park to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one thousand twenty dollars for the for use on the Mullins Head property, two hundred and seventy dollars from North Haven. on the Mullins Head property, two hundred and seventy dollars from North Haven Conservation Partners, seven hundred and fifty dollars from Maine Coast Heritage Trust.
Thank you for spelling.
And again, that's this is just a budget where most of the money is spent um during the summer and um as you can see from this year, very little is spent before July, so.
I'd like to appropriate enough money to have just one spelling gap.
It was changed, the spelling sign was changed to the appropriate spelling historically accurate. I think we should hit Conservation Partners a lot harder than that.
Well, they they give more than that, but we could only use as much as we're budgeting for that. Um, normally everything they give goes towards this.
Article twenty-seven, Recreation Council, uh, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate five thousand seven hundred dollars from taxation for the North Haven Recreation Council, five hundred from Waterman's Community Center and five thousand two hundred from taxation.
And again, with this, um, a lot of what they spend is for community days, which is in August, so that doesn't fall in this budget. I'm not sure what.
Is that scholarship?
That's scholarship.
Scholarships. Those are mostly summer.
The scholarships are are one of the first things they do, but it's the we just didn't um appropriate um, well, fifty dollars for community days, but we didn't have to worry about community days in this budget because that happens in August. So and most of the bills are paid after.
The applications um for same year are earlier and earlier.
Yeah, yeah, those are in the spring.
Article twenty-eight, debt service, uh, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one hundred thirty-one thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars for debt service, eleven thousand eight hundred from interest earned and one hundred nineteen thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars from taxation.
I have a question.
Yes, Eric.
Public safety building.
Public safety, I think it's the second bridge.
It's just in the wrong way.
It's in.
It should have gone in the tan line, is what you're saying?
Since two thousand thirteen.
Oh, yeah, that. Yeah, that was, yeah, that's just that one. No, because that payment um, falls later in the year. I think that's a September payment. Yeah.
And one thing that we won't and one thing we won't have anymore because we're switching to the fiscal year is that tan payment. So.
Good catch. To see if the town will raise and appropriate thirty-three thousand dollars from taxation for the operation, operating expenses on the sewer department.
Is it not possible to get that from the sewer and water fees?
We did just change the allowance for sewer to try to generate additional revenue. And based on the calculations, it's supposed to raise nine thousand dollars a year.
Should the sewer rates go under max inflation?
That is our plan is to um, visit a rate increase.
But to pay for the whole operation, it's got to the point where they would be astronomical.
Our fees already are really high because of the number of users.
Deciding from everything here, um, the probably today is we won't say that we um try to give it a lot of water. And it's uh, many small communities with waters from departments um that acts, it's it's really threatening throughout the state where smaller communities, people off the system are not going to report I mean, is the tax base that help support. If there would be actually just gas and mobile for users to put their bills.
Does it have to be approved by the community?
Not for sewer, only water.
I I just wanted to say that because part of it is saying like the people who are not you know, are benefiting from it. I don't think that's true. Because um our water quality, water, in the they're there and on the source system. Um, and we have a lot of people on the island to benefit from, you know, uh, businesses on water. And so I I think it's I comment upon us especially given so sorts of effort. I think it's really important for us to continue to do this.
Thank you.
So where is that?
I was against the word.
I'm sorry. Nope, what'd you say? Sorry.
Where does the decision stand to spread the cost of the sewer over broader uh, the broader community and increase the taxation?
That's that's what.
The dollar amount of, yeah. They will raise thirty-three thousand dollars through taxation.
This is actually the second time. So when we, yeah, so this has already been uh, last year for the calendar year, we raised sixty-four thousand four hundred. Yes.
We we, I mean, it's unfortunate because we really waited too long. We've been talking about it for years and then same thing with the water department. We did the sand pipe. We painted that for over three hundred thousand dollars and that a lot of that should have been offset by taxation, not not from the user fees that we, yes. Reserve request, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry to be taking that into play. I don't really understand this. But how is it different now in town meetings? This budget that you're now going on is for half a year's budget? Not about start January, just like if it overfields out saying what because I quite can't understand.
Yeah, I can, yeah. I could do that. So because we're switching to a fiscal year, um, that puts us on with the school and then um, we're not having to get that tan loan um, which saves us about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars a year. You have to have a transition period. So what we are voting on on Saturday is that transition period. So it'll be January first to June thirtieth to twenty twenty-six. We will immediately start working on the fiscal year budget, which would be July first, twenty twenty-six to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. And from now on, those um, town meetings will be in May. So we'll hold a town meeting in May of twenty twenty-six for that fiscal year and then town meeting thereafter will be in May. And by doing the fiscal year, now we can actually separate out the um payments for your real estate. So instead of one payment in um, the fall, your payment now will be broken up. So you'll do one, I think, with September and then one in February.
Well, yeah, it will be, you'll get one tax bill, but you don't have to pay it all at once. You can pay it, you choose page. You can pay it all at once, but you don't have. Yeah.
Yeah. There will not be two every, there is definitely one going forward.
I have to say, I appreciate it being broken down.
Yeah.
Yes, we didn't want to go fourteen months and without having to be in.
The other option would have been to do an eighteen month budget. And we just thought that was, that would be too hard to be accurate trying to do an eighteen month budget. Yeah.
The taxes will be, sorry, the 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 tax bills will be twice a year just in this next calendar year or every year thereafter?
No, this, for the six month budget, there'll just be one tax bill for that six months. But going forward, there'll be a tax bill. Going forward, there'll be a town meeting in May. Um, taxes will be committed soon after the July fiscal year starts. Um, for the total year, but the payment, the due dates will be two due dates instead of one. No, you would have to, the interest on the first half will start um, when that first half payment is due.
But you can pay the whole thing. Yeah, you can pay the whole thing.
You said September. Yeah. Yeah, you can, but the you would be paying some interest.
When's the first?
No, he's talking about the next fiscal year.
Right, the the full fiscal year.
Yeah.
Right, the when we're on a regular schedule, the bills will go out like in July. And there'll be a due date of um, oh, yeah, September, that's right, September and then, sorry. I thought I had it all in my head, but yes, you can pay it all in September, but. Yeah, I was just thinking September is later than.
On your taxes anytime throughout the year, you don't have to, for your bill to arrive. Um, you can make incremental payments all year long.
That's what I do. By the time the bill comes out, I sometimes they're paid because I just take away, whatever I can.
They'll do in February?
Yes.
But it will just be like.
It'll be for that six month, the six month budget.
It's very close to thirty percent, whatever you think.
It'll be, yeah, a little less. And another thing that we don't have to worry about in the six months is the um, Knox County payment that's close to half a million because that we pay in September. So that won't come due until the full year budget. Well, we'll, that's, that's why we'll be able to bill early because we'll be doing our budgets the same time as the schools.
This six month budget, Mary, um, I, you know, I've had to do half one year, half the other year. Um, so I use um we know. I used um, that last half of twenty-four, the first part of twenty-five um, for this tax season that just went out and, yep, so the for the six month budget, I'll use the remainder six month budget um, and figure that. So that's it. It'll be half. And then when we do, we commit again in July, it'll be on their full budget. We won't have to split it out anymore.
So we'll be paying whatever this.
We'll be paying.
We're still making school payments
Yeah.
for this six months.
Right.
But we know what the amount is already.
Right. Whatever the total of what we're talking to you. It's gonna be what our new tax bill.
Yeah, yeah. So the minimum.
The county won't, won't be part of that formula because, yeah.
Do you have a question, Bridgette?
Sorry, I I don't want this now. So the budget twenty-sixth on that we're talking about is just to cover from that vote through to July first.
January, January first through June thirtieth.
Property tax bill is different than what.
Right, when we, when we figure the property tax bills, the three main components are the municipal budget, the school budget and the Knox County bill. Um, so for this six month budget, we'll have the municipal budget and the school, but the Knox County bill is just a once a year payment and that's paid um, in September. So we don't have to figure that into this six month budget.
What Jamie was saying is that is that the budget we voted for last March is completely partial and this is eventually.
Right.
Well.
Part of the school budget, um, because the town was a calendar year, January to December, the school was already on a fiscal on July one to June third. So each year when I committed uh, property taxes, I had to take um, half of the budget, one from the previous year, one of the current year, half of each of those. Um, and that is what uh, was used for the schools uh, net to be raised. Um, moving forward, we will be, it'll be a cleaner uh, review. Um, sorry, kind of didn't see if um, it'll be a cleaner review, right? When you look at tax documents and it says school um, net to be raised, it'll be exactly what the school voted on in that year instead of it having to be that fifty percent of two years. Yep.
Committees have to submit your budgets for the next um, for the next year's start.
Um, we'll probably start what, February?
January, February, yeah.
Yeah, we'll pretty much start when we used to. We'll just have a little more time to work on.
Yeah.
Other questions? Uh, so they broke down uh, the reserve requests. So article four to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate five thousand dollars from taxation for the office equipment reserve fund as a computers.
Computers and.
Windows because they don't recognize Windows.
Yeah, so we just had to, was it three computers or four?
Three, the town office and one at the clinic.
Yeah, so we had to upgrade to Windows eleven. And four computers could not, we could not upgrade those to Windows eleven because they weren't compatible. So we had to buy four new computers, which depleted that reserve. We're just putting money back in. So there's something there in case of an emergency.
And just work towards when we need to replace the server.
Yeah.
Article nine to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars from taxation for the community building reserve fund.
And what that is for, um, is to update the bathrooms um, and to make them ADA compliant. So any upgrades that we do on any buildings that aren't ADA compliant, they have to be. So um, both restrooms will be updated.
Thought we were just read up.
I'd say probably eight nineteen eighty, so.
Article third, sorry, oh, sorry.
The entrance to this building, it's not ADA compliant, so that. Going to be addressed as well.
So there is plans for working, a separate plan to work on the front entrance. So when that is um, done in the capital plan, it will be become an ADA compliant address.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate twenty-five thousand from taxation for a water department capital reserve funds. That pumps.
That is pumps, yes. It it has been.
Thirty-one to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate one hundred thousand dollars from taxation for the sewer department capital reserve fund. Uh, we just see some big issues coming up as far as the sewer department goes. So we're trying to get ahead of that and start putting some money away, so. That was put in nineteen eighty-six, so. Yes.
So we were awarded uh, N B R C, it's Northern Border Regional Commission Grant. Um, we were provided, uh, it's a hundred thousand dollars. It's a fifty uh, percent match. The total estimated cost for the engineering um, for this project um, is at two hundred and eighteen thousand. So we still have a hundred and eighteen thousand, but we did apply for a separate grant. It's a state grant um to, um, I think it's for seventy-five thousand to help offset the cost for the engineering. And then we applied for a separate federal grant. Um, it's for the the estimated cost for the entire project is six million dollars. So we applied for a grant, um, it got approved through the appropriations committee, um, and then it just needs to be approved um, at the federal government level. Um, Um, and everything's on hold right now, but they, um, uh. The appropriations committee approved four million dollar grant to go towards this project. So, two million would be, you know, at the cost of the town, but we are working very hard to find grants. To help cover a part of that two million, but four million dollars, that is amazing.
Thirty-two to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate one thousand dollars in taxation for unemployment insurance through zero fund.
So this was actually in an operating budget line, and each year it would go into the undesignated fund. And by doing it this way. Uh, we can keep it each year, we don't lose it, it doesn't go in the undesignated fund, it stays in that reserve account. So if we have an unemployment claim, that money is there to pay it.
And we're self insured, so we don't, like most businesses, just pay unemployment insurance premiums, but we just. We don't have to do that, but if somebody goes on unemployment, then we get billed directly to go towards their.
So this way, once it builds up to a certain amount, we won't have to appropriate that anymore if it's not being used, so.
Balance and requests. So you can kind of see that what the balance was, uh, thirty-one, December twenty twenty-four, and what we're budgeting for.
That was, um. Yeah, we traded it in, um, and I think thirty-five.
It was thirty-five thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think this, um, spreadsheet actually does not have, um, this years in it, this is as of the end of twenty-five. Or.
So the vision statement, that was what we came up with, like our little paragraph is what the town wants to do moving forward and what we envision the town to be. Um, so we were all finished with that.
That was what the, um, thoroughfare project came out of that and some other things. The process started maybe three or four years ago.
Twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, and so that was just, um, money we had to work towards these specific goals until we had everything else in place.
Yes, yes, yep, so we, when we talked to some of the consultants, they said that we should have a vision statement prior to doing that. So we kind of started at the top and then working our way down. But all of these. A lot of these grants actually wanted the town to have a vision statement moving forward. Any other questions on it? What information?
Uh, where it says on the vision thing, due to the vision process being completed, I would like to create a warrant article and remove the seventy-five thousand, six sixty-one. Sewer reserve reducing the amount here to twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, that was actually last year.
Yeah.
Well.
We did that last town meeting, yep.
Who is I, and I would like to. Create one.
Oh, that wasn't you? You said I.
So the money was no longer necessary since the vision statement was already completed. So that at town meeting, at the last town meeting, it was voted to move it to, I believe, between.
Yeah, that's.
It's already completed. Any other questions? Uh, so we see the total increase for the twenty twenty-six, uh, budget compared to twenty twenty-five. So the total change is actually minus fifty-three point five two, or fifty-four point five three percent. Yes, but this actually. No, I think the budget committee in the town office did a great job, I mean, especially this close to already paying the taxes and then having to do a half a year is. It's important. Uh, so we have openings on boards and committees, uh, to shoot, uh, Article two to choose a member for the select board to fill an unexpired term. Any questions? I think it's, or is it like a year and a half?
See, the select board position, it's, it, all these positions are just filling the terms, ends, um, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. And then the two budget committee ones are June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six.
Well, as of now, we need.
Yep, so right now we have Christie Howell, Phil Markey, and Jasmine Santee Page for the select board. And then we still have to fill the two budget committee names, possibly three, so.
Is there anybody here tonight that would like to put their name in the ring? We can add it to the.
A lot of good people for the budget. Budget committees too.
Town employees cannot be on a budget committee now. Not on budget committee now, there's a conflict of interest of.
No, we'd be our own boss.
Budgeting.
Yeah. It works in the. But not local.
Yeah, there's certain positions that, that can be on boards. Um, and certain positions, certain boards that positions cannot be on, and budget committee is one of those, it's a conflict of interest.
Well, the, the budget committee is a little different because that's, they only recommend, they don't.
Any other questions, any questions at all while we've gone over tonight? Thank you very much for your time and thanks for coming out. Hope, uh, hope to see everybody on Saturday, nine AM. I think we can just leave the chairs.
Yes.
Yeah, like I said, we could leave everything, um, till Saturday. So he actually is doing it, but Ro Doc is bringing speakers and microphones.
I want to congratulate the town for such a high turnout for the election yesterday, what, a hundred and ninety-six? How many are there eligible?
Well, the, the list says three seventy-five, but it takes a long time for the state to boot you off the list if you're inactive. So we have a lot of inactive people on there that move and we don't, you know, they just. Yeah, I think it has to go through a few presidential cycles and then they go through and they, um, purge the list. And I can't take people off unless they ask.
Well over half, that's great. Sixty-nine on Saturday, Hunter's breakfast.
Yeah. Yeah, well, and there are some, there are some states that don't communicate. If in Maine, if they go anywhere and register, then it automatically, I get a thing saying you have one voter that's been taken off your list. Um, and some states do that, but some states don't communicate with each other. But, um, you know, we have a lot of people that haven't voted here in years, so I'm assuming they might have gone and registered somewhere else. Some, like my mother moved and she never voted again, and she was on our list until, um, probably until she passed away, and, you know, and. She just never registered, so.
Excuse me, hey, I've moved, take my name off.
They have to actually fill out a form. Yeah, well, when they, if they move and when they register somewhere else, then it, I automatically get notified. To that they've been removed. If it's in the state, in some other states, yeah, yeah. Well, no, but it has to have either a recommended amount or in the article, it can't just be to raise. Some money for. Whatever, although I did, um, Roy brought me a town report from, I think, forty-two or forty-three. And they, they were worded, um, to raise how much money, more or less. So I don't know when that changed, but that's how it used to be. So, yeah, they all said more or less.
Yeah, everybody have a great night, uh, unless you want us to bring up the rest of the select board meeting.
Thank you all.
Thank you, I really appreciate.
Those.
Wait, there's not much on here.
Yes.
There's not much. There's only a couple of things left, yeah, yeah. So if you go to the calendar and you click on the select board meeting itself, there's going to be wording there, there's a link in that wording, that where the, the agenda is.
Yeah, so that's the town website, which I'd never think to go to, so, but that's good to know.
It's the first and third Wednesday at four now.
Saturday, I've got my sign and my little papers to ask people to sign off. Oh, just sign it for my phone list.
I'll set a table up for you.
But still, there's an extra table. Well, I, it's so nice to have a new list.
No, I'll stay sure it's all set up for you.
Thank you very much.
No big deal.
Thank you, everybody, I'll see you guys tomorrow.
Updated, right? That around the toilet?
Well, it separates the toilet and the general space, but everyone has locked the general space.
Should have been in there before games. Yeah, that was awesome.
Or also, when someone would open up the door. Of all of the spectators who were getting stationed.
Yeah, I saw it this night.
I saw two things, are we recording?
All good?
Yep.
All right, they call North Haven Select Board back to order. With the budget hearing, adjustments to the agenda.
Um, I have received an email, uh, or a text today, um, to remove emergency services holiday party request from the agenda. They are not going to look at doing it at Calderwood. I hope so, I just, I was pulling out of my driveway to head to work and didn't have signal. And as soon as I got here, I, I just haven't had follow-up, but I, I hope.
Now, I thought it was a great idea.
I know that we didn't hear about it. Until the letters came out in the mail. Or. Oh, but it was a town line. Yeah. Especially, and some of us didn't know before I got there, and I know, I know I can't go because I got over trainings.
Hopefully we have a bunch of people show up. Thank you. Looking for approval of the minutes of Septem- wait, September, October.
I, I fixed that.
I fixed it on the one that I did.
It's October fifteenth.
October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, take a motion. Second, any discussion? Here, no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you.
Just that we.
No Jacqueline, that we went.
Are gonna scratch that.
Of course we are, I scratched it the last time, I just didn't. When I cut and pasted to use the new agenda, I used the old one.
Public comment. Here for a public comment? Uh, consent items?
No consent.
Correspondence.
No correspondence.
Old business commission meeting.
So I heard back from Amber Christie, the county administrator, they have already been scheduled for Rockland, uh, in February. So she said she would keep April open if the board was good with the commission meeting here, April fourteenth.
Do you want to add that to our calendar?
I sure will.
Great. Uh, new business, uh, fort purchase for transfer station tractor. Welcome.
Thank you for having. So we currently, tractor currently have a bucket attachment that we can clamp forks onto. However, you cannot see the forks from the operator's seat, uh, rendering an unsafe working condition. They also can go like this, or like this. And it's just generally not a good time for trying to lift something. Yeah. So I got a quote from Union Farm tonight. I believe a hundred and ninety dollars for a set of forks that, instead of clamping onto the buckets and go just straight onto the tractor. And they're adjustable with line, and that way we can move the pallets around to get them under the metal pile and under the tire pile. Without having to lift them by hand, and we can move the appliances around.
Safely.
Safely, and.
Yeah, one question, I was gonna say, uh, since you're doing the trip anyway, do you think we would want to get rid of some of those attachments that came with the tractor?
They, I talked to them about that, they work on consignment, however, they do not consign things out of their yard. So if we could find a place who was interested in buying them, yes, but they were not interested in buying what we have. Um, what we are gonna do on the trip over is the two. over is the two trailers right now are full of returnables. Uh, the trailer will be towed over with the returnables in them, taking the Andy's variety emptied and then bringing the force back so that we are using very take it both ways.
Smart. What, what's implements of the rear of the tractor?
There's a front, yeah, it's a front implement. The truck, the fork is a front, I don't know, but the the one is the essentially consigned.
Oh, it is. There was like a plow or rake?
The, the adapter thing. Do we have? Well, that has to any, any thing we call brayers, like a, like a circus grayers? What, how do you do, if you said you felt the mind? Like a spray for it.
When we first got it, Peter recommended that we get rid of some of the attachments. I said to do some research, figure out what they're worth and then.
So when the tractor's purchased, it just came with, started the purchase.
Yes.
So you don't think that you would lose any of those? Or could you see that they're?
I mean, if it doesn't, we'll be here with the recorder for that.
Yeah.
The, 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 the blower could be helpful, but I don't believe what happens. You have to put it under the, under the frame of the tractor. And then both the, both the hook up to the tail thing and then both the plow, the blower to the front and with this, I don't.
Sorry, they switched fast foot, love stuff, boy.
Am I missing something? I'm staring at it and reading.
Yeah, because they make a plate that can be attached to those attachments or the quick attachment.
Uh, and yeah, but you still have to put some under bolt thing on it for the PTO.
So if you could just do some research, see what you want to keep and then.
Yeah.
Give us some recommendations.
Well, I think with the town plowing um, the roads up there anyway with the plow truck. Hey, Peter has had been using just the bucket attachment to move the little bits of snow.
Right.
Like enforcement. The force, I think. Since we need to get everything up onto pallets. We tried doing it, Bud and I did try doing it with the, with lanterns and it did not go well.
So we still have plenty of money.
In the reserve.
In the reserves. Okay.
So then should we discuss the potential sale after we've written this up, doing the lookout of implements because even if you land on sports, if they're not the main lines, the air first and then the whole rating to ability.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I'm really thinking. Thank you. If this company is a favorite, even if you're involved with the sport of today, right? That should seem quite sweet.
Right.
If not given her, don't let me just lose.
Looking for a motion to approve the transfer station to purchase uh, fork attachment for the tractor from Union Tractor uh, for one thousand two hundred and ninety dollars out of the reserves.
Concerns, go move.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? There are no discussion. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
No more bruising.
Have Evan. They now being recorded.
You uh, sell the clinic propane stove.
So there was an incident at the clinic a couple of weeks ago. Um, it's actually the propane ran out and the sulfur smell that comes when your propane's low. But um, there was concerns about having a propane um, stove in the clinic. Um, so there was a nice local citizen who um, sold the clinic a electric stove for a hundred, it was a hundred dollars?
Oh, I don't know.
I think it was a hundred dollars. Um, and um, we used one of the, the gas stove is still in really good condition. Nobody hardly ever uses it. So we wanted to look at selling it.
So was there already established?
So there was, it had to be um, yeah. All that's already done.
Is there anything else needed for the propane tanks?
What do you mean?
That would, that would probably be the only thing we had propane for.
No, I think the generator.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the generator.
Is a hundred dollars. I mean.
Starting there.
Well, no, we purchased the, the, the electric stove, I think was for a hundred dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm just talking about selling it.
Oh, so I guess.
Starting that. Gotcha. We're just gonna do that on Facebook. Where do we usually do that? The website?
We can do it on Facebook and the website. Yeah.
So the only thing you need a motion for is to sell. So. Uh, looking for a motion to sell the clinic propane stove for one hundred dollars.
Starting.
Starting.
And I think.
I've been in war.
Nothing printed at the store. For anybody that's not online.
Okay, great.
So.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Here are none. All those in favor? Town administrator.
I didn't put any updates on there.
Sorry, Yella.
Only because I didn't know how long this, I wanted to keep the things.
That worked out.
Yeah.
Uh, calendar.
So we had the referendum yesterday, public meeting today, town meeting the eighth, and then um, November nineteenth is going to be our kickoff meeting for plans.
She is cruising.
Um, oh. Um, it'll be a regular town meeting, but the start of the town meet, or start of the select board meeting will be the um, kickoff. And once the kickoff happens, we will go ahead and get the survey out. And I believe our first official town plan meeting is in February.
I'm not gonna do your, pretty much. Anybody have any issues from town?
I'll just reiterate that I had the plans before the date this Saturday. I think I said it last. I'm getting D C. If you want me to record, I'll. We watch it for David for us.
Oh, I won't do Zoom because I'll need my computer to.
No, I just, Jacqueline is gonna be, well, I guess we don't.
We'll have another report number two.
Well, not to laugh.
Right.
No, on time up November nineteenth.
You're talking about Saturday. You're not gonna be here Saturday. But we do not, but Jacqueline's gonna be here, but we don't need a forum for town meeting anyway. So.
You're good.
You're gonna be here at the. Oh, yeah. Got you, got you.
Should be good. Other issues on calendar? Here are none. Looking for a motion to adjourn? All those in favor? Thank you. Recording, stop.
Thanks, Ron.